I feel rusty.
Rusty, I haven't done this in a week now.
I haven't done this, and not with both. I'm hampered with too much technology. Apologize, do my best here.
Your transcript is great.
Creepy.
Especially upset at them.
Nice, I'll make you an eye on things. Good morning.
Morning. Hi, good evening, it's November 28th, 2022, this is the GBOS LUC special joint meeting. Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I will call this meeting to order at 5:04 PM. I'm Breanna S. Co-Chair, Parks Recreation Cemetery Supervisor in the room.
Mike Edgerton, Co-Chair, Land Use Supervisor.
Guy Wade, Fire Department.
Kevin McDermott, Land Use Chair.
Ryan F. Smith, Land Use Vice Chair.
And we have Jennifer Wingard and Amanda Sassy are excused, and Shannon O'Brien also excused. So this is our attendance for this evening. No one else is online from the committees. Are there any disclosures tonight? Hearing and seeing none. Time for agenda revisions and approval. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Who to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Guy, we'll do this by a sense, are there any objections to the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, the agenda for November 28th is approved. Announcements, the public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comment to the board rather than other members of the public, and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. For one on the agenda tonight, discuss and vote on GBOS additional power for housing and economic stability.
Okay, so I'll take this, that's okay?
Yes, please.
So we've discussed this at two GBOS meetings, and one LUC meeting, I think, in detail. And then we had a work session as well. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what happened at the work session. So we had a, we had Bill Folsie on who was the, used to be the municipal manager. Before that was the municipal attorney, and is now doing work as an external attorney or external counsel for the Assembly. And he actually did the preparation of this draft, which is in front of you, which is the ordinance which go in front of the Assembly. And he answered several questions, which I'm going to do a very poor attempt at representing. So the, the basic way that Anchorage municipality is structured is there's a set of services which occur across the whole municipality, and a lot of services are done just in smaller areas, in small areas called service areas. And I think I said a couple of things, they end up going. So things like roads, well, things like police are a good example, where Anchorage PD has a service area which encompasses McHugh Creek all the way up to the opening arm. So they cover the whole of the area except the Turnigan Arm. And in fact, there are naturally two sets of police services or three sets of police services in Turnigan. There's one along the Sioux Highway, which is a special service area just for the highway itself, which APD covers. There's Girdwood, us, and we have our own contract and police, contract with video by policing. And there's the other communities along Turnigan Arm, which come under the service area called Turnigan Arm Police Service Area, which is just basically for emergency response and nothing else. They don't do any patrolling, they just respond in the case of major emergencies. And they pay a very small amount of money, it goes into a pool, it gets refund, it gets, they've set a tax rate every few years, so they stay a certain amount of money sits there, it's that $50,000 a year or something, it's the, or $50,000 sits in that pool. Sometimes they pay no tax towards it, sometimes they pay a little, but it varies. So police is split into these different service areas. Fire is split into a service area mostly of the bowl and some of Eagle River, which is, which is done by AFP. Tugatkin, Bertwood are covered by their own service area, Girdwood's covered by its own service area, and quite a lot of the hillside and parts of South Anchorage and other areas are not covered by any fire department, so they're outside all those areas, they just have no fire coverage. So that's kind of how things work. So these service areas are for what's called special services, which can be pretty much anything which isn't already, which the municipality could do, because we're a home rule municipality, we can basically do anything the state doesn't say we can't do. So anything that the municipality can do that isn't explicitly called out as an area-wide power is something potentially we can do as a service area. And most other parts of the municipality, you have one service per service area. Girdwood is different, we currently have five or maybe six services in one single geographic entity. So this suggestion is to give us an extra one. And the, if we look at the, if we look at, actually not the ordinance first, but AM, which is on the third page, I think. Page four, sorry. Third sheet. So this kind of describes roughly what we're doing. So it's, so it gives Girdwood valid service area, which has a board of, Girdwood Board of Supervisors, some power to, to provide services around what we are calling housing and economic stability. And the concept here is that because we have unique housing problems, which are different, we have all the housing problems the union has, and you know, many communities in the US have. But then in addition, we have additional problems and additional pressures from being a resort. And we're the only part of the union that has that. So what this power would do is allow us to deal with those sort of extra things, that the extra pressures that come from a resort in a number of different ways. The first part of this document just sort of outlines that we have these special differences, so that justifies a special power. And then the, the rest of it basically talks about some of the things that could be done under this power in terms of services. So this is kind of in terms of some very specific things we can do, but there are some other things that come along with the service area power. One of those is that we become formally part of the process, and we have kind of a formal power which the municipality recognizes. It's become very obvious from the whole Hills discussion that, you know, Girdwood is a, is a community, even though we have a board of supervisors, we're functioning as a community council, so it's outside of government. And it's, you know, in concept, no different from any other special interest, you know, like a, I don't know, mushroom group, animal rescue, whatever it might be, it's a, it's a, it's a group of, it's an interested group of people outside of the municipality. So because we're outside of the municipality, a lot of the processes and things that happen formally within the municipality don't necessarily include, often don't include at all, these sort of outside interests. By pulling the issue of housing into the board of, into the service area, it's actually now within the municipality, so we have a different status and a number of discussions. So for example, when, if, for example, HLB have a proposal that goes out, it goes through a, some number of different municipal departments, we would effectively be one of those, and we would be inside that process. So we're inside the tent rather than outside the tent, that's the first thing. The second thing that was obvious when we discussed Holton Hills is because there's again no formal power, no formal government power of housing, particularly Girdwood. If money was made available from the municipality for sale, there's no one who can hold it. If, if land was to be managed under housing, there's no entity that's tied to Girdwood that could hold it. This power actually gives us both, it gives us the ability to manage land, held by the union, the same way as we manage parks. It gives us the, the way to hold money, which is either comes through the union, it was held by the union, or indeed could be acquired by grants as well. So it gives us a way to hold money, it gives us a way to manage land, and it puts us formally inside the process. So they are actually some of the biggest advantages. And then on top of that, it gives us a way to spend tax money if we wish on, on various things associated with, with housing and the special conditions within Girdwood. That might be additional study, it might be getting some expert help for crafting policies that we know would work for short-term rental, et cetera. So instead of us as volunteers guessing the right thing, we can actually bring an expert in to do it, and to show that it would work. It gives us the opportunity to potentially spend money on enforcement of certain things. So for, again, for example, in short-term rental, one of the problems is you can put these rules in place, but if nobody's actually stepping up and checking, they don't really mean very much. So it would give us the option in the future of perhaps subcontracting something to, to sort of do enforcement, at least checking on these sorts of things. So it gives us more control over how these policies are implemented. It gives us more of the ability to get expertise to help develop policies, and it gives us more options in how they're actually implemented. So that's kind of the point, and it solves a number of the problems that came up through Holton Hills. What this itself does not do is solve the short-term rental problem, or solve how we're going to produce affordable housing. What it does is put a structure in place that lets us do that in a formal way. So it gives us a, it gives us a power, and it gives us a lot more leverage, and we're actually part of the conversation in the way we are currently.
Thank you very much, Mike. Are there any questions in the room?
Yeah, a couple, I guess. So at this point, do we need to, so this is going to go before, in the April election, Girdwood as a community will decide on it.
Yes.
At that point, or is there going to be some cap that, or a total amount, maximum that we can ask for, vote on as a board on, on these budgets? Or is it, is it just going to be open-ended as far as what we, whatever the board, whoever may, whoever that may be can decide, as long as they stay under the mill rate of six, they can tax up to as much as they want on this? Where, there's no cap as far as what we think the taxes will be each year?
Correct, it's the same as all of our other services. We have a, we have the five services now, and they, you know, together, we decide ourselves as a, as a board, acted by the public, how much money we're going to allocate on the budget to each of these different services. And then as long as the whole thing is less than a mill rate of six, that's acceptable. This does not change the maximum mill rate, we're still under that tax cap, et cetera. But yeah, as the, just the other thing I was going to say, I put on the back page just something we could do in the first year, but, and this would be analogous to what we did with the cemetery. With the cemetery, we did some studies, feasibility study, we ended up doing a plan, but a lot of years we did nothing. So we had a, we paid, you know, nothing into that part. Some years we had particular things to do. And with the cemetery, we paid ourselves as a, as a service area for certain preparatory things, but we never intended to pay for building a cemetery ourselves. The intention was to find, you know, use that resource at the beginning to work out the best way to pay for it overall. And now we're in the process of trying to get that bond across the whole of the municipality. It hit a few hiccups, but that's still the plan. So this would be somewhat analogous of, you know, there are things we can do that would help us a lot, many of which don't really spend any money, but would help us a lot in the housing, the housing discussion, having a formal influence on that. If we're actually going to, at some point in the future, you know, maybe there'll actually be housing be developed for, for, you know, the workforce here, we're not going to be paying that for the municipal, we're going to be using, we're going to be leveraging perhaps a small amount of that in order to get grant writer to, to get grants in order to do that. So we're not intending to be, you know, raising millions of dollars for generating housing. It's much more, you know, small seed money to put things in place that are needed to get there.
I guess kind of a follow-up to that. So when this comes for the community in April, during the April election, I know like bonds typically, they kind of give a breakdown of what that, and I know we're not voting on a bond here, but an idea of what that tax is going to be. Will the public have any indication of what that tax will be when they're voting on it?
So we can, we can definitely, you know, we could, we could propose something. I mean, the most important thing is, the time limited thing at the moment is, we need to get, if we're going to do it, we need to get something in front of the Assembly by the next meeting, basically. Otherwise, it's too late to go on April's ballot. But between then, we as a board could, you know, come up with some proposed, you know, fund or spend, you know, proposed budget if it passes. But we'd be in the same position to work the, with the police and cemetery or anything else. Until it passes, we can't actually do anything with it, we can't do anything formally. And even if we proposed a budget, you know, we could potentially change it in the future. So I think that'd be a good idea. It'll make the discussion a lot more concrete.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with this plan, and I just, I think asking the community to vote on it, it'd be nice to have some bounds or some ideas of what's coming out of their pocket.
I think it has, there has to be better examples than we currently have in this document, about what it's actually for and some specific things. And we, I mean, I don't know if we as, we as a board can do some of that, we can't advocate for people to vote yes or no, but we can provide information about that one. So we can do that as a board, and obviously as individual members, we can.
Yes.
I'm going to get one more, just one more comment too. There is a, I think on line 43. It does kind of read to me that, if I was just reading this, that there would be, we're already taxed ourselves to this point, and there will not be an additional tax. I know you're referring to the, the mill rate here, and we're not going to exceed that. But like on line 16, you know, proposition would not increase or other five, as effectability to levy or collect taxes. And I don't know if that's.
Page 16, the line 16 on which?
On the, and it isn't in the, it's on the, hey.
All right, right. Yeah, I think that's the, you know, that's lawyer language. They consider the, the budget and the ability to collect, you know, what you can collect as taxes to different things. So it doesn't actually change our ability to levy or collect taxes. It actually, it doesn't. I mean, we can choose to, we can choose to allocate, and you know, we could choose to spend money on this instead of something else that we'd already put in the budget. Or we could in fact not change tax mill rate at all, and use the probable increased assessed value and allocate that, or even allocate some of that and reduce the mill rate. So there's all sorts of things we can, you know, we can, we can do with this in the future. It's kind of too early to say. But I know what you mean, it's kind of misleading. And I've sent that very question to, to Bill who drafted this.
You know, and line 42 as well, you know.
Yes.
Levy any additional taxes.
Right, because we don't actually levy any additional taxes.
Right.
We pay one tax in the service area. And I see what you mean about it's misleading, but I don't know that it's, I don't know if the language would be changed, because that's the way the language is always set up, typically is.
Thank you, Guy, for those questions, and Mike for the thorough explanation. So because it was drafted by Bill Folsie and, and worked by you, that it's hard to change that already.
Well, this will, so I should have just said the process. So if we say, if we vote for this today, then it goes to the Assembly. The Assembly will introduce it, the Assembly will then have a public hearing on it, and then vote on it. So there's still plenty of opportunity to, to provide comment, through the Assembly at least.
Question, yes. Kevin.
So first off, I'm really, that's important, this idea to think it's, you know, as you said, you know, through the last couple of years, it's clear that we need some means of, you know, legal counsel or professionals to come in and help guide these processes. Now, my question, you know, to budget, you know, so I understand, you know, we're not raising any additional taxes. But, you know, in a given year, you know, if we're taking money for this, we're taking, you know, there's less money conceivably for something else. So in a given year, and this might be more of a Kyle question, you know, like your example here in the back with $85,000, is that, do we sometimes have a surplus of $85,000? Or is it more like, yeah, well, we can't, we won't have this money for any of the other five items? You see what I mean?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But I agree with you, I mean, there's a budget question about what we want, how we want to spend this. At the moment, we can do nothing. This gives us the ability to do something, and then exactly what we do is another set of questions that we can't quite answer in enough detail. I mean, they're ideas, but we have to make those trade-offs depending on, you know, what else we have in the budget, what's happened to assessments, what's happened, you know, more generally. If we end up with a big surplus this year, perhaps that's a solution.
There you go.
If we end up, you know, we're getting money back from the university declaration, for example, on some of the things we, we've already spent money on, that may turn out to give us a budget. If surplus, it may not, we don't know yet. We'll have to see as well, you know, typically, we're going to, we'd look at this at first quarter budget revision, if this power is voted in, and consider it with everything else. But we have generally a better view of how the finances look. But just stepping back, the things like giving us a seat at the table, the ability to manage land, the ability to hold money, they don't change whether, we could spend zero on it, and we still get those things.
Right, that doesn't cost anything.
Doesn't cost anything.
Yeah. In a kind of a big picture sense, that's probably the biggest benefit out of this. But I see in the immediate sense, you know, volunteers have done an amazing job, but, you know, and, yeah, we've had Brooks give great, you know, pro bono legal counsel, but to be able to hire somebody, I think would be really valuable. Anyway, thanks.
Question in the room?
Sam. Sam Daniel. So one of the things that I was going to mention is that years gone by, when we had adequate community planning staff, we did get support, you know, when we did the first Girdwood area plan, and those kinds of projects, then the union had much more firepower to bring to our disposal. And as I understand it, you're saying then that when this, if this gets approved, the mechanism by which it would work, is that already kind of defined? Or is it going to be a fact-finding process for deciding exactly how it would get administered?
Both. So there's already, you know, in the discussions that have happened so far, there's already pretty strong agreement on what definitely is okay, and what might be more difficult. But it would be, you know, nowhere else in the union has this kind of power. But nowhere else in the union had its own police power until we decided to do it. So, and it turns out nobody had their own cemetery, maybe they did have cemetery powers, a bit more complex. But, you know, so what we're doing is we're coming, we're, we're going up to the union and saying, we have this problem, this is our proposed solution, we think it'll work, we've done some due diligence. And, you know, when it actually comes to final implementation, we may find there's some kind of questions about exactly where we can go, where we can't go. I believe based on discussions I've had, for example, the issue about enforcing, if we choose to actually do enforcement, or at least to do something very close to enforcement, that would be an option. There may be someone in the legal department of the union who says no, they don't think so, but then again, it's a, it's a discussion. So there might be some things around the edge, but there's, you know, we already, as a service area, manage land, so that would seem to be a no-brainer. We definitely receive money and apply for grants, receive grant funding and things like that, so that also seems like a no-brainer. So there are some things which definitely fall within the powers here.
One quick follow-up, it seemed like both you guys were heading towards though, how do we educate the electorate so that they're making an informed decision and understand how deep it's going to reach into their checkbook, and what the, what it would look like in the future? And so, you know, to the degree that you guys were able to kind of say, this is what we think might work, and ensure that with the community, I think you're likely to get good support. But it is a lot harder, like you were saying, if you don't know
Yes.
what the bottom line is, and where it's going to come from. Because I think one of the biggest concerns you have to have is that your municipal staff is tapped out.
Yes.
They were 10 years ago, probably, but they just keep doing and doing. And at some point, if we add these powers, then there has to be someone else other than these two positions that take care of that also.
Yeah, so I think that would be the expectation. This is, this would be, you know, what we probably are going to be spending this on is getting some external help expertise or whatever. And whether that's by contracting with a particular individual, you know, particular individuals or businesses or nonprofits, I think that's to be discovered. But a lot of, actually in the, in the resolution here, it does, it does point out that we would, at the moment, our sense is, if we're doing anything major, like, you know, potentially actually developing land or whatever, you know, those sorts of bigger projects, they would absolutely be done through, you know, through contract with a nonprofit or some other entity. We're not intending to do that ourselves.
One more comment, Brianna, if it's okay, and then I'll be quiet.
And Sam.
Is it, oh, what really excites me about this is that it, the consensus building that we did during the Holton Hills project and bringing divergent groups together and talking about what they really like, this was one of the primary asks that we were hoping for, is to have some sort of a body that could oversee this in the future. And it may not be as immediate, but gosh, if we can get to be where we're running our own chip to a large degree, then everyone's going to be supportive of that, I think. Especially if it doesn't really, if you keep it under the tax cap. And I know just anecdotally that I'm working on the stats, and year over year, just for residential in Girdwood, we are appreciated 13%. So that, that's a lot. On a good year before, we were maybe doing six or six to eight.
So five would be a pretty good year.
Oh, for any place else like Girdwood, and this is just the last part, five years, but this is the biggest increase we've had. It's pretty incredible. And so the idea of having extra income is credible, I would think.
And then obviously, that, I mean, addition to that, there's more just in infill housing, just the number of small projects, not big ones like Holton Hill. You know, there's a lot of extra housing coming in. So that itself actually adds, you know, without anyone paying another penny, it adds extra income.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments, Kevin?
I would just, maybe a follow-up with Sam. But as this, you know, word gets out to local voters to really emphasize that this does not, this doesn't cost anything additional to what we're already paying in taxes.
Yeah, basically.
And, you know, I know, however we get that message out, I think that's, will get a lot of support with it.
Yeah, people. It's not as simple, it's not as simple as saying we're doing police or we're doing fire. It's, it's a harder thing to, it's a harder thing to explain, it's more subtle than that. But it's, you know, it's the same thing of we're actually trying to get in the driver's seat and provide service ourselves, rather than relying on the municipality to
Yep.
do it for us.
Kyle.
I just want to make clarification on that point. If, if, if our current operating budgets don't change, we stay flat, but then we add in $85,000, that is more being asked from the taxpayers to pay for this service. What the, this task with GBOS is that they can't go past, the mill cap, we can't go past. We've never actually got to the mill cap since I've been here. We've stayed within a half, if not more, this year, I think we're a whole mill below. And we, we probably will be three-quarters of a mill this year after the new assessments come out. But if, say you ask for $85,000, that's going to be $84,000, $85,000, we're going to ask more, that's going to be split between all the taxpayers, which can be pretty minor. But still, it is, there is some more money that's going to happen, unless GBOS says, and, and this is where it might come in, is GBOS may say, okay, we're going to cede that just with $5,000, and then, and once you get into the operating year, we're going to tap into the reserve, and we're going to pull out $80,000 and pay for the project. And that way, a budget's set, and we just add to that budget, start for the season. So, so there's definitely options to that. But, but that said, this GBOS can be gone, somebody else can come in and say, we want to take whatever remaining from our operating budgets and take it all the way to the cap and use that for planning dollars or housing dollars, then that can happen. So I just want to make sure people understand that, that there is a chance that you will be paying more taxes because of this.
I mean, that could happen now, I mean, the first quarter budget revisions could, you know, whoever's in next May could decide that we want to spend a lot more on parks or roads or something else.
For sure.
Throw it up to see.
Within those entities, but this is another power you're adding in, so it is another aspect we're powering.
Okay. But the, I'll have to do the calculation, but the, it will be interesting to see just, again, without even assessments going up, with all assessments staying the same, we have a lot more housing here than we did, you know, a year ago. So that itself has a big plus.
Correct, so it'll be spread out more.
Thank you, Kyle. Margaret?
I saw a comment flash up from, in the chat from Crystal, and I was wondering, Crystal, do you want to ask your question out loud? Because not everybody can see the chat.
Sure, so, I think Mike actually, I think, answered it after I asked it, which was, what powers does this give GVSA to enforce regulations on the existing homes in Girdwood?
So my understanding is, we, well, whether it's on existing, I mean, certain things we, certain things that are left to other departments, it would stay left. we, certain things that are left to other departments, it would stay left to other departments. But based on discussions I've had with, mainly with Bill Folsing, about, you know, is enforcement an option? It seems like it could be, yes. So it probably depends on the particular case. I don't think, you know, we're unilaterally going to decide to enforce building codes, because we actually, we're outside a building code area, and we would stay outside a building code area. But if we, for example, if, if there was a change to short-term rentals, and there were requirements for short-term rentals, it's possible that we could use this power to, to, you know, to, to enforce some of those rules and regulations, and possibly for existing ones, I don't know. But I, this isn't a, this isn't primary, this isn't the primary purpose of this thing, it's just within the range of things that may be possible.
Thank you, Mike. Does that answer your question, Crystal?
Yeah, it does. I'll just say, I think it affects private property rights as like an underlying issue, and I would say that it's probably better suited to be voted at a regular LUC meeting than a special meeting, but that's my general sense, because there's just not very many people attending today to really understand what is being discussed. Anyway, thanks.
Can I respond to that, please? I think what you, I don't quite understand your comment there, because when we're talking about enforcement or something, it's things like, I'll give you an example. The, we have these rules about secure trash regulations, so, you know, you're supposed to lock trash out, you're supposed to do that. At the moment, there's one part of the municipality that, that sort of follows up on that and potentially issues warnings and stuff like that, and, you know, they're often very busy, maybe they, maybe they don't. Somebody else, some other entity potentially could. This isn't about bringing new regulations in. I think what you're talking about is things you're not supposed to do now. So things you've already, that are, you know, you're not supposed to be doing, somebody just verifying that. But again, that is not the primary purpose of it, and it's not like bringing new things in, or bringing new requirements or regulations in, that would be a different process.
Thank you, and thank you for all the discussion in the room as well. Are there any more questions or comments? I've said it before, but I was really excited months ago when this came forward, and Mike started doing the work on this after everything that everyone in the room already brought up with what we've been enduring in Gertwood for the last year and a half, two years, for housing solutions and problems, and time is of the essence, because this needs to go to the assembly for their next meeting. So I would ask what the will of the body in the room is, and if, Mike, you'd like to read the resolution into the record.
If the resolution is in the packet.
It's in the packet.
I feel I don't need to, but I will do if you wish.
No. I don't know who could void the reading or if it needed to be read into it. So, it's here in front of us as the resolution, and if anyone would like to make a motion.
Well, I will make.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ryan. Any further discussion? Can I ask for a roll call vote, please?
Sure, and this is a GBS, so are we just voting GBS, or are we voting as a LUC body?
I'm fine with everyone voting.
Okay. We have, we have to do it as GBS as well.
It was written.
Yeah.
So.
But it looks here like folks.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with doing it any other way. I'm, I'm able to be more creative, I suppose, but it seems to me, you know, and to Crystal's point, I was thinking that perhaps a confirmation vote could take place. So when do you need it for the assembly specifically?
I think the intent would be to introduce it at next, next week at that meeting, so they could then vote on it, or have a public hearing on the September twenty-second meeting.
Right, so there's time for a land use meeting in between, so we could.
Before the twenty-second, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that would, if there was a vote that was positive now, then we could do a reaffirmation vote with a more robust, robust group of land use on the twelfth, I think it is.
So maybe we just do a vote of GBS, yeah, that way time, yeah, we'll come back to land use.
Yes, that work for everyone. I, I think that that's a really important.
That makes sense.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll just do a GBS vote, and then LUC will vote on it at their regular meeting, so it'll be a presentation again.
So, and although I appreciate Ryan seconding that, if this is a GBS vote, then we could use a different second.
When you give us member this second.
Oh, I'll second that.
Thanks. Sorry about that, Ryan.
Okay. And we discussed, any further discussion for the GBS roll call vote?
Okay, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, and we'll look forward to next assembly meeting. There, so I'll go to item number two, actually, it's a dot, but it's probably two. Agenda item LUC twenty-two-ten dot zero dash zero-six, request for LUC recommendation for GBS for legislative support for addition.
That's.
Great, two, real. Discuss and vote on GBS letter of objection to the DOT Alaska Highway Interchange Trumpet Design, which we have discussed at many meetings, and Jennifer Wingard and Amanda Wolf not present, would like to speak to this.
I'll speak to it very briefly. I think this summarizes the discussions we've had in previous meetings, I think, is a pretty accurate representation of most of what I've heard from the community. It's a, you know, we're not arguing that it isn't needed, there isn't a solution needed, what we're saying is this solution is out of, completely out of scale with the, with the problem, and would have a much larger impact on the community, a negative impact on the community than we wish.
Thank you, Mike. Guy?
Quick comment. This letter, essentially, this letter was presented during our GBS meeting last Monday as well, you know, so it has some time for public feedback, and it's gotten a lot of public feedback from that. So it hasn't really changed the essence of the letter, it hasn't changed. I think they made some small refinements to it.
Great, thank you.
We didn't actually vote on it last time, we just agreed to that.
Right, we agreed to decide on day of this meeting. And I think the letter does encapsulate most everything we did speak to at the meetings, and some, if not all, of the feedback from the community is somewhere mentioned, and if I wanted to add anything more, I would just do it on an independent level, because they've made it very clear to submit comments and concerns to the engineers and the DOT. They've been really wonderful to work with and receptive with feedback. So, this summarizes everything pretty without a bunch of detail, so. And thank you, Jennifer and Amanda, and Mike, the meeting with the LUC are doing this. Any other thoughts or comments? Brian?
Questions?
Yes.
So, I understand this is to make the highway safer. I've only been here for ten years, eleven years, but it doesn't seem like there's a huge amount of problems at the intersection currently. Is that, am I mistaken there, or is there an issue that I am just unaware of?
I agree on that.
I guess I can. The, what I've heard is that, one of the, one of the things people have said is, yeah, you know, there are accidents there, but there aren't any fatalities, or there haven't been many fatalities, there have been almost none. And that's true, but a lot of what determines whether it's a serious accident or fatality is about how quick we get, you get emergency response. And, you know, it's right, and it's very, very close to, to our fire station, and generally, if something happens there, there's EMS within minutes. So it might be that, you know, it's partly luck. Definitely there are accidents there, so it's not, and then there are definitely slowdowns, and there are problems, you know, there are congestion in summer, et cetera, but I mean, I agree with you, I do not think that the, the scale of the, of the structure they're putting in there is completely mismatched with the scale of the problem. Good. Thank you, I appreciate the clarification. That was, that was my sense as well, is that this is an immense project for a problem that is not immense, necessarily, right?
Right, and Christina Hubert with DOT is on the call, if we want to ask her if she would like to respond. Christina, you're welcome to say anything if you'd like.
No, only to answer questions, if I can.
Okay, thank you.
Do you mind if I?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
Christina, I think I know the answer to this, but last question anyway. What's the, what happens next with this project, what are the next steps?
On Monday, we'll be presenting the project to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We'll be telling them, this is our, we'd like to have this be our selected alternative. There is the possibility that they might decide they want the project presented at a public hearing, which Monday will not be. So in that case, we might be, if they decide that, we might be presenting it again to them in January. At this point, we're anticipating that there will be no problems with approving it. Planning and zoning commission's mandate is to make sure that our projects comply with approved local planning documents, which we've made sure that this does. So then we would be moving forward with the NEPA process and as much of the design as is necessary to inform the NEPA process.
Would the, the environmental impact from coming out of the NEPA process, could that change the design in significant ways, or would it typically just be small adjustments and keep basically the same design in place?
You know, anything is possible. But we have kept in mind, I mean, we've, we know what kinds of things the NEPA process looks at. I would say we would be surprised if there were any major changes coming out of it, but it's always possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Sure.
Any questions about this, or thoughts in the room? Any questions online? So, if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the letter.
I move to, to approve the letter of objection.
Okay, do we respect it?
Yes, in the packet.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Do we have a second?
I shall second that.
Thank you, Guy. Any further discussion? Okay, roll the call vote, please.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for all the work on that. Informational item, update on Holton Hills. Any update?
I'm here, I can drop. I haven't much to say.
Welcome, for it again.
Thanks.
Sam Daniel again. We made our recommendation of the board of supervisors, and taking into account what the Heritage Land Bank Commission had to say, and I believe that the committee has done most of what they could, given, but, you know, I do want to make it clear that what we were hoping for was change to the existing RIV modifications, that was arguable, and it just has become increasingly clear that that's perhaps a very, very high barrier to get over with the municipality. So, that is unfortunate, and somehow, I see most of the community pivoting towards the assembly meeting and trying to impact postponement or not doing it all for right now. And, you know, if the possibility exists to meet with the administration again, and the developer, and we could have a productive conversation that meets at least some of the community's needs, I would love to see it still get amended before it outright gets stopped in its tracks, but that's my own personal opinion. But I do want to say again that I think it was a really good process while we went through with the community, and I was very impressed with the caliber of volunteers that we were able to, that Emma and I were able to work with on that committee, and I appreciate, personally appreciate the opportunity to have been of service, and if there's anything the committee can still do, we're here.
Thank you, Sam, and thank you again for all of your service on the committee. Anything else on the hills?
We have, yeah, just on Friday, there is a work session, the assembly, so what the work sessions, what work sessions are for is multiple assembly members are in the room, and it's public meetings, they can discuss the thing that will be in front of them next week, and they can talk about potential amendments they may want to make, they can talk about how they're going to approach it, it can just be a pre-discussion on the topic, and then next Tuesday, I'm sorry, go back to the work session, other work session, Jennifer and I from GBS, and Sam from Triple H AC will be present to answer questions with the assembly. There won't be public comment, though, for a work session. And then next Tuesday at the assembly is when there's a public hearing on this item. We may find out on Friday that there's, they have an intent to postpone or delay or something else, in which case, they'll probably let us know and still go ahead with a public hearing. But again, there's all sorts of possibilities and options, and I think it'll be clear after Friday which way things are likely to go on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. Ryan?
Would it be beneficial for the community to make calls and send emails to the assembly prior to that Friday work session, so that they can work our desires to whatever their course? I think that, I think it's always helpful.
I guess versus wait until the weekend.
No, no, I think it's always helpful for the, for them to be, the assembly members to be clear what the community views are, what people in the community think.
And this work session is one, or two of two, they had one work session two weeks ago, and this will be the second before it goes to public hearing? Yes, Ryan?
The other thing I just need to say about the move towards going to the assembly meeting when the vote happens is that, just to put on everybody's radar, and there's some transportation options being offered, I think if we can continue to help mobilize the community, that would be super helpful. There's a rather large population of the community that is getting pulled into resort work at this time, and so I know, you know, for example, the fifty to sixty people on ski patrol are unlikely to be able to attend that meeting, although many of them would love to and have very compelling stories to share, so I think just if, if we, everybody on the call can continue to rally support to go to that, for those who are able, or to write a call, for those who aren't able to attend, would be beneficial for all of us.
Thank you for that announcement, too. Anything else on Holton Hills update? Okay, I'm going to move to public comment. Person's offering public comment must state their name, full name, and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Anyone care to make public comments tonight? Anyone on the call raising their hands? Would entertain a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Return to the second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Guy. Right, we're adjourned. I think we won.
Thank you.
Sure, deserve it. We should cheer all the time.